... leads to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a minute for a moment of silence for Jim Lampron's mother to pass away on Saturday. Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing to expend funds from the Security, Safety and Security Expendable Trust Fund. Marie's getting some numbers for us here.
As of January, actually it's December, oh January, it was approximately eighty thousand dollars. That was approximately, it was a little bit more than that, but approximately eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand?
Eighty, yes. What was in last week's, last... Let me look at my memo. Sorry. Um, around, well, the project total was forty-nine thousand four sixty-two. Eighty percent of that will be from the grant, and then we'll use the Department of Education, thirty-nine thousand five seventy.
Excuse me, Marie, can you talk a little bit louder, please?
What do you need?
The last dollar figure.
All right, so the total amount of the project is forty-nine thousand four sixty-two. That was approved from the Department of Ed. Of that, eighty percent of that is thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy, and...
Thirty-nine five seventy.
Thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. And then the, um, the remainder, twenty percent of nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars is to be funded from the Security Trust Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none? So we just close it now?
Close the public hearing.
Like to close the public hearing? Do we need a poll on that?
Now you've got to expend the funds.
Yep. Anybody want to make a motion to expend the funds for the forty-nine four sixty-two? Or just, we need to...
What's that number?
Forty-nine four sixty-two.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's not a roll call, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
You can do a roll call if you'd like, just to be sure.
All right, do a roll call.
Johnson, aye.
Well, let aye.
McCauley, aye. Moody, aye.
All right, thank you. Presentations?
None.
None. Public comment? Nope, do we, no, we don't have any non-public either, right? Public comment?
There's no non-public.
We're running along here. Public comment? Wow, going fast. Seeing none? Consent agenda. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I need to accept the consent agenda.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports. Superintendent's report.
Right. I'm just going to go over four things. I'm going to go over strategic planning, where we are with E-Rate, HB sixteen twelve four, as it's being called, a governance plan that's no longer a House Bill, it's an RSA, but commonly referred to as HB sixteen twelve. And I'm also going to talk about upcoming workshops in the New Hampshire School Board Association. Just going to go back to is strategic planning. You know, when I took on the office in the SAU as a superintendent, I came across a document that was titled "The Strategic Planning." It was adopted by the school board on October sixth of two thousand, twenty-ten. I guess I don't recall it ever being brought to my attention as the principle starting in 2012. There was some good stuff in there. It led me to thinking that if we are really looking to move in another direction, in a positive direction, that we really should have a roadmap of where we're going. So with your blessing, I'd like to start moving forward with bringing to the board strategic plan, how we get that done. It's a good way to start with new board members coming on that will be with us for a little while, and then move forward with a strategic plan to match what we want to do within the school district.
Good idea.
Good idea.
I have a comment. I had, I was thinking about that too after being to the delegate assembly. They were talking about strategic plans in, in, uh, the Shaker Village.
Okay.
And, uh, that came across my mind as well. I'm glad you joined.
I'll be contacting the New Hampshire School Board Association. You know, and, you know, Marie and I were talking about it, that possibly we may want to look for a facilitator to help us drive where we want to go.
That sounds expensive.
Well, I'm going to talk with... It could be.
No, it can't be.
I will be talking to the New Hampshire School Board Association to find out what those options might entail.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I had looked over the Dover School Department's strategic plan and for the elementary through the middle school. They have a lot of things in there that I think maybe you won't be interested in looking at.
Yeah, I think it's going to be, it won't be my decision. Sandy, it would be more of a decision for the entire board to look at the direction.
But something maybe to look at.
And I think we bring in some other option, you know, other options, other than what we have done in the past, but also look at what other strategic plans might look like. Uh, E-Rate, I've waited here back from E-Rate. If you've got a chance to look at my note here, all the documentation that was needed for the E-Rate reimbursement has been submitted. I have received confirmation from USAC, which is Universal Service Administrative Company, that manages our E-Rate submissions, and I expect the notification of those dispersments very soon. The governance plan, talk a lot expensive, Jen. The governance plan, HB sixteen twelve, is designed to protect students and staff's personal identifiable information. As you can see in the notes here, for those who are not looking at this, that's talking about biometric data, academic progress, behavioral discipline, medical information, web browsing history, students' geolocation, IP address. IP addresses used by students and staff, and as well as classroom activities. So the state, I've gone down a law, RSA one eighty-nine colon sixty-six, and that's that each school district must develop a governance plan to protect students' personally identifiable information, or PII. We met with mainstay to talk about what that might look like for SAU one oh one, and we're waiting back, we're waiting to hear what the final cost of that might be. I will caution you that I've spoken with other school districts, and the costs have been in the range of twenty to forty thousand dollars. Yeah, twenty to forty thousand dollars, to complete a risk assessment and an ongoing maintenance plan to ensure that we protect all the information that we are now, by law, designated that we, that we have to do. And it is a good idea. We don't want our kids' information, or your information as parents, getting out there to hackers and being used in a way that's, can be illegal or destructive. So as soon as we get that back and, and come up with some agreement with somebody, we may end up, may end up going up to a bid on it. I have no idea, you know, that that cost, what mainstay's giving us a quarter, what it would look like. There are a number of workshops coming up from New Hampshire School Board Association that have included that within your packet, so take a look at that. But I have also spoken with Will Phillips from the New Hampshire School Board Association. You recall, he came and talked to us about the deliberative session a few weeks back, and he said he can come out to talk to us about right to know. And I think with the new board coming in, it's important for us all to be on the same page about what the laws are around right to know. So if you guys are up for that, I will set up a time for him to come in and do a presentation for us at a workshop session. Is that something the board would like to entertain?
Yes.
That's all I have for the superintendent's report.
Jerry, can you just touch bases with what's going on tomorrow night?
Oh, sure.
What you're on the table, too?
It's on my research report.
Oh, so awesome.
I'm sorry, I'm hand carrying it.
I won't steal your funding.
I had a little, um, emergency last week, so I didn't get this in time for the packet, so I'm hand carrying it. But I will say that for the last couple of weeks, my focus has been to try to get this going. So Dr. Smith is in the air as we speak, coming from Kentucky. He will be presenting to the staff at grades five through eight, from nine to eleven tomorrow. So he is a lead, one of the nation's leading experts on use, teaching civility, empathy, and tolerance. We didn't realize until Jen and Jim and I had a conference call with him the week before his vacation, he was a co-author of the New Hampshire Bully Law. So he's also going to, he'll be with us tomorrow and tomorrow night. He'll be back with us on the teacher workshop day, working with the staff, and he's going to review our policy and procedures around bullying investigations, just to give us advice based on the law that he co-authored. He's also the founder of a curriculum called "The Courage to Care," which focuses on teaching tolerance, empathy, and civility. So he tries to keep the bullying word out of his work. He tries to talk more around teaching tolerance, empathy, and civility, which I think is a really great approach. So I'm really excited. I have seen him present to students in Milton, and it's a very powerful presentation. He will facilitate the community forum tomorrow night. I just want to let the board and anyone who's watching know that we did post that on Face, on the school Facebook page, on the SAU one oh one website. We had fifty copies of it brought over to the Chamber of Commerce annual dinner, so...
Also put on the Wakefield Weekly.
And we put it in the Wakefield Weekly, and I believe it got shared onto other Facebook pages. So we, we, our original hope was that he would be able to come the twenty-first and twenty-second. So the twenty-first, working with students, the evening of the twenty-first, working with the community forum, and then the next day, teacher workshop day, working with the staff. He was not available on the twenty-first. So the day he was available was the sixth, and we grabbed him, because we really feel, you know, we can talk about school improvement, but that's all a piece to school improvement, is the school culture and climate. It's being funded through a grant, which requires us to use evidence-based measurements to see how the progress is going, so we will be using a school climate and culture survey. We have not picked what we will be using, because I really want, we want the staff to be vetted in what we're using. So we want to give the staff the opportunity. We also are not committed to his curriculum. We will learn about it at the teacher workshop day, but again, we feel strongly that the staff needs to vet whatever curriculum it is that we're using. And it will be a focus, the focus of that curriculum will be in the middle school. Any other way you can get the word out tomorrow is great. Thanks to Chairman Olet, we now have babysitters, his daughter, and a friend are going to babysit for us, so we're serving pizza and salad and cookies, and we'll have babysitting, so please get the word out in the way that you can.
This is intended.
Yep. I jumped, I jumped right on.
Thank you, Pop. That was really appreciated. The only other part of my report is an update, and it's not on this, an update on our numbers. We've increased our numbers by one since last report, and we have decreased our out-of-district placements. So we have one student that his family moved away, and so we are no longer responsible for that out-of-district placement.
But what's the increase in one? Do you mean one student in the whole school, or one special needs student?
Special needs student pre-K through twelve. So we've increased by one student.
Any comments for Ann?
I couldn't see. I was behind you if I could notice. Or you? I took them forever.
That was a student, Student Service Director's report, just so they had to know that. I didn't mention that. Moving right along here. Old business. Second reading, update, policy, B E D D, Rules of Order. Everybody, everybody take a look at that? So Jerry, can you, can you tell us what the changes are on this policy? So we want to read the whole policy.
I don't believe we made any changes.
There's no changes from the first reading?
None.
All right, anybody want to make a motion to...
The only, you know, Trace, I did talk to Trace. You should ask if she did want to, if we wanted to put something in there that said this is not intended to minimize any kind of civil discourse, civil conversation, just kind of going over. This is not intended to stifle anybody, this is just more meant to run an orderly meeting.
So she wants to add, add that up?
That's up to you, that's up to you as a board.
That was my concern, was that, you know, I know someone, my, when I voiced my concern of not being able to have any back and forth, to learn something from the other, you know, and I think, was it you who told me, well, you're supposed to come with your opinion formed already? But, um, I think that we all learned something from each other, so I, I'm with her on that, that I'd hate to see it go back to the harsh stuff, where we all do such a good job.
So exactly, what do we want to say?
You can say this is not, again, this is not intended to stifle or any kind of civil discourse.
Capitalize civil.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can add that at the very end, after, after number eighteen, just to, this is not intended, this policy is not intended...
So what are you putting that, sorry, Jerry?
I'm going to put at the bottom, after number eighteen, on page twenty-three, or page three of three of the policy, B E D D. This policy is not intended to stifle any civil discourse.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Yeah.
Can public talk, I will just?
Yeah.
It's not public comment.
It's not public, it's not...
Your own B G B, your own policy.
It's not, it's not public comment.
That the public can vote, weigh in on policy discussions.
What, what policy?
B G B.
Can't hear.
That's one reason why you have to leave.
And that's, I'm not familiar with the policy.
I don't know.
Would you like to see it?
I'm not sure that, whatever the policy says, means that it can be done at any time. There is a public comment time.
Can you wait the public comment?
No. Because what I have to say is going to influence your decision.
Can I see that, first of all?
The, the policy?
Yes, please.
We've always weighed in, the public's always weighed in public. That's one reason why you have two conversations.
Sandy?
I have a question. Isn't that what the public comment at the beginning is for? Is anything that's going to be on the agenda tonight?
But this is a policy discussion.
Not a public meeting, it's a meeting in public.
I'm not sure, I just, I mean, just a matter of, it wasn't a public comment, I believe it wasn't where the, the policy myself.
Upon effective date, so before we actually vote on it?
Which you're going to vote on today.
Right, but she can make her comment already.
You can come down. Because you're going to vote on it before a public comment.
I'm sorry?
You're going to vote on it before a public comment.
Yeah, that's what I was figuring.
I expect.
You're not going to follow your own policy?
Nope, we're reading it, outside. And yes, we will.
Public's always weighing in on, on policy, because it's not just the school that has the policy. You just, anybody has a say in it.
From what I see here, it doesn't say it has to happen at the time that it's brought up.
Thanks for the gentle reminder.
I will. It's good for you, so next week.
Vote on it.
I know. It could be good, it could be bad, it could be entertaining.
I mean, public comment.
Certainly will be entertaining.
Well, it says, I'm confident you're going to speak on items on the agenda.
Let me have, let me have Jen look at that.
I would just go personally.
Which, which number are we looking at, one thing? One more. Sometimes react to, doesn't mean speak. I don't care what you, I don't care which way you go with it.
You okay with that? I will allow it.
Okay. This is policy B E D D, right?
B E D D, yep.
That's what we have it marked as.
B E D D.
It's actually B E D D R, because B E D D has been revised by the New Hampshire School Board Association, saying that the Robert's Rules of Order are extensively conscious beyond being beneficial for the typical work of the school board. So actually, you should be looking at B E D D, the revised vision, the version. The school board also has a sample rules of order, which is B E D D R. Where did you get the one that you've got now?
The New Hampshire School Board.
New Hampshire School Board.
This one's for the New Hampshire School Board Association.
This is the most updated version.
It's the most updated version.
I received this from Will Phillips, three weeks ago.
What's the date on it?
Do you have to answer the question?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the most up-to-date version, came from Will Phillips, New Hampshire School Board, three weeks ago. This is the one they'll be proposing to other school districts.
So it's not actually a policy?
It can be our policy if we choose to vote on it.
So is there a date on it?
There will be when we vote on it.
Is he calling that B E D D?
Correct.
He's not calling it B E D R.
What you see, what you see here is cut and paste from New Hampshire School Board Association.
So the B E D D is no longer in effect?
If you choose to, it is until you choose to update it. Your, each school district that has policy B E D D is in effect until they choose to adopt that this isn't a mandate. This is a recommendation. Yeah.
But I'm just saying that...
What I, what you receive in front of you is what I received from Will Phillips when I asked him for it.
Was this vetted through the policy committee?
No. This is vetted through the school board as of last, the last school board meeting.
Yeah, we had our first reading on February nineteenth.
Shouldn't have gone through the policy committee first? Isn't that why you have a policy committee?
Sure answer.
Policy committee is in, we, we, I can do this moment, I'm just trying to find... I just want to clarify something. Didn't we go into a slowdown while we were doing the other stuff? We have to back up.
We did, we have. Yep.
Policy, the policy committee has not met in a couple of months, but it can, it can go through, it can go through the policy committee. That is not atypical at all, but there have been times in this board, or in my tenure here at, in Wakefield, that not all policies have gone through the policy committee.
So we had our first reading. I need a motion to accept policy B E D B. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Any second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you so much. Here we are, and number ten, new business, which there's nothing.
No new business?
Oh, yeah.
Other business?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, make a quick mention here that, you know, we will be having a fundraiser here in the school district on April fifteenth. The Universal team, the PBIS team here is will be sponsoring Harlem Wizard, which is a entertaining basketball team, kind of the team of Harlem Globetrotters, and they'll be here on April fifteenth, so we'll be coming up with more information, letters will be going out.
Can I ask a question about that?
Of course.
Um, is, what are the grades that go to that?
All grades, I believe.
All grades do?
I believe so.
I heard from a concerned, I believe, third grader, that didn't think she was going to get to see it.
Well, you know, it is a, it is a fundraiser, it is a pay event at night.
Oh, it's at night, it's not during the school?
Jen, isn't there, isn't there something at school?
Yes, in the afternoon.
In the afternoon.
For all students.
For all students.
K through?
Yeah.
And do the, does the basketball team play against them at all?
Uh, I believe they have volunteers that are playing. I'm not quite sure who the volunteers are, or if they're going to have a...
We're, we're still looking for volunteers for a lot of us.
Toni, you're in.
No, I'm good. I'm a little short.
I bet you make an excellent playground.
So, so April fifteenth?
April fifteenth.
Time?
Yeah, and we will let people know as we draw near, yeah, the times.
In dollars?
In dollars, yeah.
Okay.
As soon as we get everything formalized.
Okay.
Okay. So, other business. Let me go over it.
Yeah.
Teachers, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I asked a question last time we met about the kindergarten sign-up. I had a parent text me asking about when that was going to be. I haven't heard that yet.
You know, let me, I, if I forgot about that.
If it's not planned, at least we know we're not missing it.
You're not missing it right now.
No, I'll let her know.
Whoa, hang on, we got a kindergarten teacher here.
So we actually just met today to talk about it, and are you looking for the, for when the kindergarten registration?
Yeah, when they have to come in, the whole, the whole thing.
So, um, if, if it's approved, um, it will be, um, Friday, May third.
Friday, May third, okay.
With an information on that for parents to come in, uh, May twenty-first.
May twenty-first?
Yeah.
Just for clarification, that's an unofficial date, this...
Okay, yep.
Yes.
I'm sure I'll hear about that soon enough.
So, so does that mean, so the third, what that day would be the day when you bring your kids in, you have to make an appointment and all that, right?
Yeah.
Screening and all.
Ms. Jen?
Thank you.
Collect the, I'm sorry, teachers' collective bargaining agreement?
Sure. I was going to do it.
Two twenty, two twenty-two.
Just a slide, a presentation here. Hey, Pop.
Pop.
Tighten these lights a little bit here. Can you see that okay with the camera?
No.
When you head it all the way off, that's what it would be.
Natural energy.
Thank you.
That's good.
It's an energy shot.
So I just want to, some questions have come up about the salary figures that were presented regarding the teachers' collective bargaining agreement. So, got three slides, or four slides, including this one here in front of you. I just want to say that all the slides are based on the most recent salaries as presented by the Department of Education. Those numbers come out in the springtime, so the numbers that we, that were used for this development came out in the springtime of two thousand and eighteen. As you see in here, you see the salaries ranging, the average salaries ranging from the state and as well as Wakefield for the years two thousand and thirteen through two thousand and eighteen. It's based on the average, understanding that the average is comprised of numbers at the high end of the salary and the low end. So you're looking here, the state average is fifty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. That's the average. Wakefield, as you see, is forty-nine thousand nine hundred, a difference of four thousand sixty-four dollars on the average. So our lowest paid teachers and our highest paid teachers, an average of forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars as of last year, not this year, as of last year. Slide two, as you can see in here, this is the average beginning salary from years two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fifteen, two, twenty sixteen, and seventeen, eighteen. Again, the state average being thirty... 2015, 2016, and 1718. Again, the state average being $36,746, Wakefield on average, for the beginning, the teacher's beginning salary of $33,235. That's what we were paying in 2718. Again, the average for the state is $36,746. The third slide is based on some confusion on the 2.5% salary increase.
On article two.
On, the one article two, thank you. The teacher's wages, the 2.5 with the step increases is $97,670. That doesn't include in that 2.5% is the FICR and the retirement. That's an additional $25,000, $25,068, for a total of $122,737. There had been some question and concern that the 2.5% didn't add up to $122,737. That 2.5 isn't intended just for the salary and the step increases. What you also see in here is the change in the CBA. There was an increase of $13,000 for tuition and workshops. The co-curricula went from $16,150 to $18,000, an addition of $1,850, with a whole net salary benefits projected cost of $137,587. Now you see that it's an increase of $13,000 on the tuition and workshops. In part of the negotiation, what was done in there was, it was capped at $58,000, which is a difference, because what we had before, you had unlimited. You had teachers who could take up to four credits at an in-state University of New Hampshire rate of $770 at four credits. That, if you had every teacher take advantage of that, that'd be in excess of $129,000 if they chose to take advantage of that, which would really do a number on that budget line. So it's a, it's a great thing that we've capped it at $58,000. I just wanted to address that. There had been some public questions, concerns about that two and a half percent being misleading or inaccurate. And I want to point out how that was developed. Any questions from the board? None whatsoever. Excellent. That'll be it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
You set?
I'm all set.
Priscilla, you had some comments last meeting, which we're gonna address right now with you. Can you go over these journals?
Sure. You know, I took the questions that were asked. I broke it down. Basically, there were five questions that I pulled out of there. Question one is, I received a watered-down version of the non-public minutes. There's only one set of minutes which indicate the nature of the conversation that was in non-public. Number two, the meeting was never posted. And while I do not have physical proof, pictures of the postings on the wall, I have read emails dated from 1/11/19, from the administrative assistant, Larissa Mulker, into Holly Leighton at the Paul School, into Tony Boater at Town Hall, asking for the attached meeting notice to be placed in the respective locations. Larissa also stated to me that the notice was placed on our SAU bulletin board, and this has been a typical process to post a meeting notices, which have been proven to be effective and consistent. There's nothing to indicate that the process failed in this instance. I did find the posting was not made on our website. Posting on our website is not required, although it has been a regular practice. And I can certainly see that one may depend on using the website to learn of meetings. And certainly, this could be considered an oversight. But Larissa, at that point, had been on the job for a week. So again, I think that probably an oversight at worst. Number three was, I'd like to know what the urgent matter was that posed, imposed an immediate risk, the life, health, property, or environment. By law, the reason has to be stated clearly in the minutes. The minutes do not say what the reason for the emergency meeting was, as indicated by RSA 91-a:2. The RSA does not state or imply that an emergency meeting needs to be predicated on the risk of life, risk to life, health, property, or environment. It states, an emergency shall mean a situation where an immediate, undelayed action is deemed to be imperative by the chairman or presiding officer of the public body, who shall post a mo, a notice of the time and place of meeting as soon as practicable, practicable, and shall employ whatever further means are reasonably necessary to inform the public that a meeting is to be held. What should have been done, it should, I think it was, it was considered a clerical error according to New Hampshire School Board Association, that it should have been posted more likely as a special meeting and not an emergency meeting. Special meeting would not have the same kind of indication that it has to be noted within the minutes of why the special meeting was called, although would be reasonable to do so. Question number four, are there two sets of minutes? No, there are not two sets of minutes. Number five, I'd like to know what the plan is to do to correct this matter. I think the matter was most likely considered a clerical error, but I have asked Will Phillips to come in and do a presentation on the right to know laws. That's it.
Well done.
Just, so you know, I did look at my notes, and this all came to me. I did ask for an emergency meeting, which I should have been asking for a special meeting, I guess. But it is what it is for that part of it. Nobody else picked it up, so. Those are the comments back, Priscilla. I'm gonna move on to public comment, because I'm sure you have something for that.
So it's, those minutes were voted to be sealed in non-public. You seal the minutes of minutes so that you're not hurting somebody's reputation, et cetera. Those innocuous minutes that I received, which are in that letter, that state nothing except the superintendent was in there, why would those have to be sealed?
You got an answer for that?
I think it was a concern about what was in the minutes, what they weren't read back to the board at that point. There was a question about whether we should, the minutes should be sealed. It was determined that nothing was in those minutes that would be damaged to anybody's character.
I'm not buying it. You don't seal minutes if you, if they're gonna be innocuous. There may not have been two sets of minutes, because the ones that you're gonna seal might not have been written yet.
Well, we did choose, we did choose to seal the minutes, we saw.
I know you did. But like I am saying, the sealed minutes might have not been, the ones you intended to seal, might not have been written yet. And when I requested minutes after all over 72 hours, that's what I got, was a watered-down version, obviously, because there would be no reason to seal those.
I don't know about a watered-down version myself.
Today, the minutes were not changed.
Yeah.
In any way.
Any other public comment? Nothing else? All right. What do we stand up? Is that it?
That is it.
Wow.
There was nothing else, or no?
When's the election?
Tuesday.
Tuesday at 12:00.
It's our last meeting.
Yes, Tony, it's your last meeting. Thank you for serving on the school board.
We are gonna miss you.
Yeah, thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. Anything else? Anything for flowers or anything?
No.
For Jim's mother.
Yeah, she has my clothes.
Okay. I'm not gonna give her any.
I'm like, that's weird.
You guys don't need to, in a board meeting, make that decision. You guys can.
Just do it otherwise, okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Well, the motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye for the last time, there, girl.